It's a tree that's been around. Looks like it was his house.
Sorry, me doing this all standing. Let's get a road call first.
Mayor Pressgraves?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Mr. Goffmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Mike Castro?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Ms. Pence?
Here.
The conditions to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a agreement of continuity of government. This meeting of the town council is being held pursuant to the April thirteenth twenty twenty ordinance of the continuity of government. The town clerk should read the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronically quite present. In-person attendance by the public is permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order and phase and guidelines issued by Governor North. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page and recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes in the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the town council. Steve?
Yes, sir. First, first item on, on our agenda tonight is an item that the planning commission conducted a public hearing on. It is an update to sections two oh two and four oh six of the town code regarding artisan manufacturing. This had been discussed by town council back in February and council had requested that due to concerns about noise, heat and, and other issues associated with manufacturing that we make artisan food preparation a byright use in the B one district, but artisan manufacturing a special use permit so that council and planning commission can consider potential impacts on adjoining properties. Uh, the code was updated and planning commission has recommended approval of the, the code that does have a special use permit for artisan manufacturing in, in the business district.
Steve, was that unanimous or was it split?
I believe it was unanimous.
And can you tell me why the change was made from gallons to barrels?
Uh, that was when, in researching the ABC, uh, they, uh, I don't know why, but that's what I've found as being the, the threshold that they identified.
You know, that's huge.
Yes. Now, if council desires, we can bring that down.
It's twelve hundred seventy-five gallons a day.
Yes, sir.
Beer?
Yeah.
What do they make up here? Anybody?
I don't think they make beer every day up at the brewer. I think it is more of a, at best weekly and I think they make maybe five hundred gallons at, at, for maximum.
A day?
Well, they, I think that's the maximum capacity they have, but I don't think they, they brew but maybe once a week. I, I, I really don't know, but.
My, my son worked for him. He brewed twice a week.
Twice a week?
Early in the morning till about noonish. And then, cause they had to be like, what, fourteen days in advance, so many days in advance till it's set for a while.
Yeah, I, 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 I know that they aren't brewing daily and I think I, I, I.
Yeah, he's, he's way lower than this, what he does here.
It is, and if there is concern, we can definitely reduce that amount if council desires.
Well, I, I just can't see how you can produce that much beer in a building. That's only, the biggest it can be is four thousand square feet. That's fifty thousand.
Oh, we have no height restriction. They could, they, you know, you can put a fifty, sixty hu- feet high.
Okay. So does there a reason why the fifteen thousand barrels? Is that just a number you pulled off of ABC website?
That's, that's, yes, ma'am.
Is that the cap under ABC or?
That's what I, yes, that's.
Well, this thing says any given twelve month period, so is that what, it means fifteen thousand barrels in a year?
Yes.
Is that still that much a day?
Yeah, we're gonna get taxed on if they sell fifteen thousand barrels.
Yeah. I think we do like it is.
Four hundred sixty-five thousand gallons. That's all I'll need. I have one question. Is food required?
Not in the state of Virginia if you're selling beer.
For, for a brewery? I'm, 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 I'm sorry.
No, it's in the state of Virginia for a brewery.
No.
All right, it says, it sells beer on breweries in conjunction with food. That's it.
If they want to, but ABC, does ABC, the House of Representatives sell just beer?
Can I ask any questions, Steve? Just keep on driving.
Yes, sir. The, oh, golly. As part of the Lorae Meadows CDBG grant, the town is required to effectively have an ownership interest in the property as well as some other requirements so that the state will provide us the seven hundred thousand dollars that we will effectively conduct the improvements at the apartment project and, and gain reimbursement from the state for those improvements. Uh, as such, People Inc. has developed and, and our attorney has reviewed and, and developed the attached draft documents that basically define the roles and obligations of the town and, and People Inc. Uh, there is a, a note indeed of trust that the People Inc. will be responsible for any costs that the town incurs through that seven hundred thousand dollar grant. If, if we go forward and, and put in all the infrastructure and for some reason People Inc. walks away, they would be financially responsible to repay the state for those improvements if the project was not completed. Um, and then there's the whole harmless and indemnification agreement.
Under the secured covenants, the number four, how it talks about, um, should it not receive the seven hundred thousand in a grant, it would pay back the town. So I assume that it's Lorae Meadows LLC is the one who is securing that promise to us?
I believe that that is the entity that People Inc. has created for this project, yes.
And then, so People, People Inc. is well established in Virginia, they've done quite a few projects, but are they? My question is, is, is People Inc. responsible for, for this? Should they not get the seven hundred thousand dollar grant? Or is Lorae Meadows LLC going to be the one responsible? Does Lorae Meadows LLC doesn't have a, this?
What?
They wouldn't proceed with the project.
Yeah, the, no, the, the money, the, the way that the state is requiring it, the town will have to bid the work that is covered under that seven hundred thousand dollars. We will have to employ the contractor. We would be, um, once, we actually have to pay out of pocket that money and then we get reimbursed from the state for those expenses. The, in, the, the, the secured covenants would be if, because the work that we're doing is at the front of the project, if we proceed with that, we put in the, the water and sewer improvements and, and, and some parking lot improvements, and then for one reason or another, People Inc. walks away from the project, the state would look to the town to reimburse the state for those improvements that were of no benefit, were of no, yeah, of no benefit to the community as far as low income housing. So I, I, to, to your question, I will ask Jason, because the agreement is made out to Lorae Meadows, but it does refer to People Inc., I would assume that there is a connection, but I will ask that to Jason.
They're the grantor, so they're the ones that are on the hook. Lorae Meadows, that is, is the grantor. So they are the ones that will be liable for it. And the whole point of that LLC is that it would pierce the LLC in for it.
Probably.
Yeah, but, but the property would then be liquidated, correct? That would be the, that's one of our, they would sell the property.
And hopefully recover the cost, yes.
And hopefully none of, of course, none of this is likely to happen.
But the grant, uh, if, if the grant were not approved, then the project would be.
Oh, the project, uh, the grant's already been approved and.
What I'm saying, if they, for some reason physically did not proceed the.
Well, and, and that's where in the, 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 the potential problem, the town is responsible for a certain portion of public improvements on the project. Those will have to be done in advance of vertical construction. And, and, and the, the problem would be, uh, we go forward, we get the, the public improvements made, and then for one reason or another, People Inc. does not proceed with the vertical construction. At which point the state would come back and say the town, that there was no benefit realized from the CDBG grant, you need to repay us. At which point we would then go back to People Inc. to, to recover that cost through either liquidation of the property or some other monetary means. Now, I, I will check with Jason on that, how, how confident we are.
And the other question I have is under exhibit property description, deed of trust of note, sorry, I don't have the page or, um, we're halfway through that section of that packet. It talks about, it's talking about value received and talks about payment terms. It says that this shall be payable twenty years after this note. So does this mean that if they do not immediately get that grant, that we are providing them zero interest loan for twenty years? Or is that one?
Where are you? What you, is it the?
It's under, so here's the packet, right? So you have one, two, three, four, five, six, which number six, it looks like this, deed of trust note. And, um, it's under section B, payment terms.
Is Jason not with us on it?
No.
I guess that would just be, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm reading that to believe that basically we're agreeing to loan them seven hundred thousand dollars at a zero rate for twenty years.
I'll have to check on that, cause again, the way that the CDBG grant is set up, we front the money for the public improvements, the state reimburses us for those costs. And at that point, we're whole unless the project isn't completed. So I'm not sure about this twenty year repayment, I'll have to check on that.
And then again, if they're the ones, if it's Lorae Meadows, if it's People.
What are they saying about the projects? Do you guys still, I don't understand, still waiting for it? Do they have any, any kind of timeline?
They are hoping to get it bid this fall.
Well, they don't get in no hurry on it. Good, great. They didn't move around, but what, two years or more? It's not the first time. Got out on the white side. That was, that would've been nice. Didn't get, couldn't get back. When you say Pink Link doesn't give up, I guess you say that. Looks like this one's gonna work, at least I hope so. I would guarantee.
We're hopeful. They, I, they have acquired the property and, and they have hired the engineer to, and architect to develop the, the plans, so, I think it's better than fifty percent that it'll get done.
That's reassuring there, Steve. You're optimistic.
I, I am optimistic that it'll get done. I won't, I won't go and say that I'm fully a hundred percent that it'll get done, but I'm, I'm more confident than not that it will get done.
What roles the planning district commission plays in this? Are they?
They are actually our agents. They are assisting the town with basically all of the necessary paperwork, all of the necessary advertising. They're kind of watching over Brian and I to make sure that we don't miss anything so that the state comes back and says, no, town, you made those improvements, but you missed items three, four, and five of the contract, so you don't get anything and, and you're, you're on the hook for that. So they're, they're helping us to, uh, make all of the necessary reporting to the state so that there's no reason that we would be, uh, in, on the hook for.
Do they have any of their regional, of their regional grant monies vested in?
No, sir. Uh, no, I don't believe they do.
But we're not paying them anything for their services.
We are, we are paying them for their services through the grant. We're not out of pocket anything. The, 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 the state recognizes that the paperwork associated with their grants is very cumbersome, so they do allow you to dedicate a portion of the award amount to go towards a third party to, to do that.
Can I ask any questions, Steve, you'll ask? Do you want to say people?
Yes, sir. Following the, the, the state, and, and I apologize for being relatively tepid in how I'm presenting this because this is something that the state has adopted and they say has become effective as of July fifteenth, but they really haven't provided all of the details yet. Effectively, what they've adopted is that if an employee of a business or government in Virginia feels that the employer is not doing enough to protect them from COVID, that they now have the mechanism to file a complaint with Voesh and Voesh has the enforcement authority to pursue, uh, corrective action. And what, what happened July fifteenth, the state adopted the rules, but the rules basically have a lot of definitions, but don't really have a lot of meat of what we're supposed to do to, to, uh, provide protection of our employees. We basically have, uh, we have been following, and, and most localities and businesses are trying to follow what the CDC says, what, um, what Department of Health, all of the, the different entities that are trying to say, this is what you need to do to protect people. Uh, we are trying to do that. But what the state is trying to do is, uh, part of what is, has been requested is that we develop a, a list of temporary standards to inform our employees that if they have a concern, they should talk to us first, but if they don't think that we're doing enough, they have a mechanism through Voesh to force us to, to do something different if it's warranted. Plus, the, the biggest thing that the town is having to adopt, uh, is the analysis of the various work groups. And we have to identify which groups have the more exposure than not. And, and, and we have, um, on page six of twelve of the document, uh, the administrative water plant and parks and recs departments are relatively low exposure. Yes, we talk with people, but we have provided PPE. It is available and, and it's encouraged if you are having to have direct contact with staff. Uh, thankfully, uh, the town hall had already had the partition installed, so that, uh, in lieu of, of having to wear masks, our, our folks, um, have that option if they choose, but we do have the shields in place. The wastewater treatment plant in our public works, due to, uh, exposure to waste materials, they're at a slightly elevated, uh, medium exposure. And then our police department, because they are a first responder, having to, to respond to individuals, um, and, and get in very close contact with them, they are at the highest risk of, of our employees. And again, we've provided all the PPE and, and we are, uh, I know the, the chief and his staff are, are following all of the protocols as far as when they approach individuals. But the, it's just the town recognizing and, and letting our staff know that, um, you know, where we feel that they are in the, the potential exposure level and by, by that, letting them know of the PPE that is available to protect them. Uh, beyond that, it, this is still evolving and it hasn't been finalized. Part of what they also approved is that at a day in the future, they will be providing, they, Voesh will be developing a, either a video or a PowerPoint presentation that we will have to present to all of our employees about the risks of exposure to COVID, what steps can be taken to mitigate that and what to do if you are exposed and what the employer, um, should provide to you if you are exposed. As far as, you know, if you're, if you're having to go into isolation, you know, what, what benefits continue through the town as you, as you go into isolation for a job-related incident or exposure. So anyway, wanted, we, this is the best available information that I have right now. The final version may not be what we've presented, but we wanted to at least let you all know that we are monitoring it, the state is requiring it, and in some form, we will be asking council to adopt temporary emergency standards so that we're in compliance with Voesh, but we're also doing all we can to let our staff know about, um, their exposure levels and, and how to mitigate it.
Okay, any questions or implications on that? Browns Building?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, at the work session, council had asked staff to start developing items to obtain cost estimates for, to improve at the Browns Building. I, I know that we met with the painter today and I know that we've contacted a contractor. I don't know if we've gotten the quotes back on that. Uh, at any rate, what we're asking for is, is quotes to replace the front window. Uh, currently there are, there's plywood there, uh, to repair or replace the door overhangs, to paint the front facade, paint the entire building, uh, paint the kitchen, paint the restaurant, um, repair the rear steps, and to repair lighting, um, within the restaurant. Uh, what we had understood from Mr. Dudley was that it's relatively dark in there and doesn't present well to potential buyers, so we're trying to, uh, identify the items that we think would be cost-effective. The, the easiest one is that we're going in there and, and replacing light bulbs so that when the lights go on, it's as bright as can be. If the light fixtures aren't working, that's where we'll be working with the contractor to see what it would cost to either replace the fixture itself or if there's more that needs to occur. So these are what we are working to, to present, to have cost estimates for, and as we get them, we will let you know.
Now that you've done the work inside the building, would it be possible to set up a day where we could take a look at some of these items or making a decision on where to spend money?
Absolutely. If, if any member wants to, to, to go in, we can absolutely walk you through and if there's other items that you think would be worthy of getting cost or getting proposals for, you know, we can, we can work with you on that.
Lorae Park Association?
Um, following some of the discussion about the monuments, we started researching the arrangement that the town has with the Lorae Park Association. What we were able to confirm is that there was an agreement that, uh, between the town and the park association where the town assumed maintenance responsibilities for Inlon Park and the property around the singing tower back in nineteen forty-eight, nineteen forty-nine. Unfortunately, both the association and the town weren't able to find a copy of that agreement. So as such, we worked with Jason to come up with a new maintenance agreement that, uh, the town and, and association, uh, can consider and, and, and hopefully adopt in the future. Uh, it has been provided to the association for their review. Uh, we've not heard back from them on it yet. But the, the intent would be that we would update whatever agreement had been adopted. That way we know what we are responsible for and what, and the association knows what they are responsible for.
I'm just curious, Steve, to do that research, did, did employee have to go to like the basement and open up boxes and go through that paperwork? Or is any of this stuff electronic back in nineteen forty-eight?
Uh, no, it was all paper. Thankfully, we didn't have to go to the basement, but, uh, the, the research, uh, was through minutes, uh, town council minutes.
What do they cap? Are they capping binders upstairs?
We have, uh, they are in binders in the vault upstairs.
That could take a lot of time, I mean, you know, I would think.
The, the good news is, is that, um, we were able to get a definitive date from Lowell Bond with the association. He went through their records and he was able to locate, um, a time period in nineteen forty-eight when, when they had, so we were able to go directly to the nineteen forty-eight minutes and just start reading through until we found discussions that, um, were, uh, associated with the, the agreement. But no, we don't have, we, we've not scanned in anything that far back.
I, I wouldn't think we would. It's just, when we talk about door research, I don't think people realize just how much time something like that can take. You got all this other stuff you're doing at the same time, is the way I think. I'm glad you looked it up.
Steve, what is the, the Lorae Park Association, what is their, their goal? Are they going to hold these demands in perpetuity and help the town continues to maintain and invest in them? And what, what's the long-term plan?
It's my understanding that the association was established as the entity to receive those properties and it has to exist in order for them to continue to own the properties. I don't know if there's a, a provision in, in how they were deeded, uh, if, if the association doesn't exist, how they, they proceed. But the association exists to own and maintain those two prop, those two properties. Unfortunately, they don't have the, the, the staff funds, what have you, to, uh, proceed with that, that maintenance. And that's why since nineteen forty-nine, they've had the agreement with the town to maintain them. The benefit of the town conducting the maintenance is that we enjoy public use of Inlon Park and the, the park around the Caroline.
What's the current, uh, condition of the tennis court? Haven't been out there in a while.
Um, we just recently replaced the new ten, uh, the, the tennis court net. The.
How's the surface holding up?
Uh, for, um, an average player, it's acceptable. For a professional player, it's probably lacking. But if, um, I, I, I know of at least one person in this room that has gone out to enjoy, uh, an, an evening at the, at the, the courts and it was, it was playable.
Well, our family has gone up there and, uh, seems like after a big rain, you gotta deal with all the puddles. But there is a squeegee on the fence that you can clean off the puddles if you want.
Well, unfortunately, with any poured surface, you will have, that, that's why the squeegee is there.
Hard to get it level all the, the two or three times we resurface it, I think.
Well, what, how long ago did we resurface it? It hasn't been, I mean, it's since I've been on council, six years ago, five years, six years?
Probably the last five years.
Almost had to tear it all the way out to start over is what I'm thinking, to get a level court.
It'll just settle again.
Well, how do they do it? How do they get level places? How do they get level places?
Place you never come here.
Add a zero to the price problem?
So what I'm hearing is the Luray Park Association just plans to hold this property, but they want us to continue to maintain it indefinitely since they don't have the funds to do it.
Lowell came to the meeting once and he gave us the whole spiel. Y'all may remember better than I do, but there was something about, the end was there that was burned down and they needed a place for the public to be before they took the carriage over to the caverns. So those homeowners donated the land to, for public use forever, but they kept it in their name and only thing we're doing is mowing the grass like we would do anyhow. It's like a public park that we don't own the title of the land, is all it is.
So I'm wondering if the Luray Park Association was once the Luray Land Corporation, because the Luray Land Corporation used to own those lots.
I don't believe so.
Luray Land Corporation owned a lot of it.
Yeah, owned all of Inlon.
The town, I mean, the lot of it, lots and everything.
And it's listed in here that those lots will not be available for residential. It's listed that they will be in here as parkland. And I'm wondering, you know, did this land, was it originally part of that subdivision and then that subdivision decided that we would use that land for park use? And then my question is, at what point does, like, is this just gonna be forever, they're gonna own it and we're gonna maintain it? I mean, because then we lose a sense of control over the fate of our investments that go in there. Another concern I have is that the contract is only valid for five years.
And Jason said that effectively, the, the way that the legislation is set up in, in Virginia now is that you can only go into an agreement such as this for a five-year period. It's actually, it's one year, but it allows for four one-year automatic renewals and yes, at the end of five years, we will have to renew it.
Another question or concern that I have is just in terms of the maintenance that goes on there, I mean, there's a walking trail, there's several benches, there's the gravel parking lot, landscaping, the signage, just the pond and all of these things. I'm not saying that they're not access to the town, I certainly think that they are. I just don't know that it makes sense for a third party to continue to own them and maintain control over the use, such as LDI had to go and ask the park board for permission to do an event there. And then recently, Powell had to ask the park board for permission to do an event there. So as a town, we're continuing to pay for investment into private property and private property is still having decisions made about what investments were made or not made and who uses it and when to use it. Those are the concerns I have. And I don't know how we address that, but is this the Luray Park Association, is their intent to continue to just own this indefinitely and depend upon the town to maintain it? I mean, what's the plan?
I think, well, my understanding is that they do do some fundraising, but their fundraising is primarily associated with maintenance and operation of the Caroline. And so they are continuing to raise funds for that effort. It's just my understanding that, again, since 1949, there, there has been the agreement with the town that the town will, will do the maintenance as they operate effectively as, as public property while they are actually private.
That's the point though, Steve, and that, that the Caroline, if we were to switch that around, we probably don't want ownership of that Caroline. Obviously, there was some significant maintenance that we associate with that. What was the last year that they raised quite a bit of money? That otherwise would have been public funds used for?
I don't think the Caroline itself is, it's part of, it's part of the associate department, association.
It's not?
I don't, I don't think the Caroline itself is, I, I don't believe so, but...
I don't know, Brian? The, the park association property includes the Caroline, doesn't it?
The, the, not the structure, I know it does that part, but...
The Bell Lloyd Monument was dedicated by the cavern, but at some point in time in the past, I believe that the caverns and the, the family that built that, the Northcott family, donated that property to the Luray Park Association, which included the structure, I believe. Lowell would be the best person to ask for that, but I believe that at some point in time, they donated that and they set up the trust with money in the trust to be able to solve that, but just the light bill alone on the, on the Caroline, each one is significant and the park association pays for that. So those are huge lights out there that illuminate that thing and the very top, yeah, they would make that, but...
They also paint and repair it, too.
Yeah, they pay for that.
Of course, we don't have one right now. Mayor's always set on the board, the park board, whoever the next mayor's bid, he'll set it on him, and he has the same voting rights as everybody else, but I will never vote on that when it's an issue like this with the town of Luray, I just don't want to abstain on any of it. I do get emails.
But I don't know what our option would be, if, what would be our option?
And the contract, perhaps under public use, which is the first page, perhaps reworded so that the town, you know, the town is in control of the property and how to use, so like if LDI wants to have an event or if Powell wants to have an event, it's all ran through the town, so that the town sort of, for instance, has the ability to control the use during the time. Otherwise, it's, again, we're, we're basically continuing to invest money into property we don't own, A, or continuing to main property we don't own, and we don't even have control over the use or sale.
But in turn, as Steve said, public is the user, right?
Sure.
I mean, I mean, that's significant. If, if they, if they wanted to keep it private property, that would be a real loss to the town, that it would be, that space for public use.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't work out an agreement or ask the Luray Park Association what their long-term plan is. I mean, you're allowing somebody to privately own this and they're not paying taxes on it and we're paying for the maintenance of it and the improvements, not just maintenance.
Yeah, wait, I, I don't think we'll allow them to own the property. They own the property, they don't allow that, they just own it, and they're letting us use it the way I look at it. They're letting us use it free.
Just like half a cave barn belongs to cavern, that belongs to the park one. And when we drained and cleaned cave barn the last time, the caverns shipped in, if I remember right, about $10,000 to clean out their half, but the only thing they asked for was a little place of, of lily pads to be left.
Well, it seems like the singing tower is one of the main things this town is known for and the uses I've used to Inlon Park is immense throughout my whole life here, you know, the parades they have, the playground, the Easter egg hunts.
That's the only big playground in town that is.
It's a great bit there, I think.
It's a playground really in town that is.
There's one over roster drive, there's a roster driving, too.
Yeah, another one over here.
So we're back at the college right now, it's a little small park.
Eugene Park, sure.
That's it, Eugene Park.
And that community is built for sheltering.
I mean, if I'm the only one that sees something a little peculiar about this arrangement, then, then that's fine, I'm just the only one.
You are.
But, but I just think that, I mean, it's not, we're not using it for free. It is a lot of labor that goes into it and it is taxpayers' money that continues to get invested into private property under an agreement in which we have no intention to ever, or maybe we do have intention to take it over if Luray Park Association were to offer it, I don't know, but my point is, is that we don't control the outcome of it and we continue to invest time and money into it.
There's never been a, a problem with anyone requesting to use it, that it, that it has not been granted, so, you know, if there was some reason to...
If it's for the, the, we used to have, before Rough and Plaza was ever, that's where we had our evenings on main at, at the park over there. That was free.
We had a stage, we had a stage over there.
We're also the ones wearing it out, so it probably makes sense to fix it back up, right? The public's wearing it out, we're the ones using it.
He should talk to Lowell, but he, there, there were some reasons that, he, he has extensive knowledge about it. There were some reasons that I, I think that it was not outright dedicated to the town, but he should talk to Lowell, he can do a lot of the history.
Could we have Lowell attend the next meeting or a future meeting?
I could ask, yes.
That's a big one, Steve.
We don't need to do this, I'll do it.
No.
To your point, if, if something big, a big capital expenditure was coming up, like the, kind of supporting $15,000 to prepare, and we were in the last year of a five-year contract, it would be nice to know just to have a concrete answer of if there's any intent.
We tried this one time.
Do we put something to that effect?
Couldn't get a contract. They're not allowed to give you a contract, they're not allowed to rent, they're not allowed to sell it, for their personal domain.
They're not allowed to sell it. Are they allowed to change use within their bylaws of community?
So then what would happen if we were to say we're not gonna do things? Then they would, they would be in a bad situation.
You know, I don't think it's a community, we don't do that.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that either, but I think that we have to find a long, there has to be a long-term solution, can't just, we continue to have this sort of awkward...
How long's it been, though?
This has happened some years.
My position is, I won't see it.
But I can ask Mr. Bond to, if he can attend.
Lowell's done, Lowell's done wonderful work for many, many years for that park board with no recognition.
I can remember back when he was giving his presentation, I was early on here, and I remember asking, well, who was on the board of directors? And his answer was something about the original owner. And I said, well, how do you get on the board of directors? He said, well, we appoint the next ones, you know, when they pass away, their sons and daughters, it's been passed down through the generations. And it just seems to me like it's working well.
It is, and I tell you, it's a, it's a well-run organization, I, I credit it to you, Bob.
Lowell does a quality for the community we don't know about.
He is one of them.
But it, it is good to talk to them, I mean, it reassured me.
Yeah, and then the question is, is that part of that Luray Land Corporation that originally set out those lots, because there's things on the covenant that, you know, are quite interesting.
That was more the blue field, though, wasn't it? I don't think that's that far over.
I thought they were the developer and that when the hotel failed, the fire occurred, they established this organization. I, I don't think they were the same, but again, Mr. Bond are probably in a better position to respond to the question. I'll see if he can, we'll, we'll make an invitation.
He'd be glad to come, he's, he's a Walkman history booker.
The Luray Land Corporation, eventually, the drawings that we have here stopped the cave strip.
Shunde Land Improvement Company was the blue field. Luray Land, Luray Land Company was the top of it, which included Inlon, the hotel and those areas, and of course, the front area, the hotel, was parkland, for public use, so those are the lots, I think, that actually conveyed to the numbers that were referred into the tax mountain, tax amounts here, so. But they were never intended, I don't believe, for residential development, they were set aside permanently for park use by that initial corporation.
And it creates a nice attraction for our community, and I mean, it's probably, one person here has had children, they've had used it, and how frequently?
You know, there's few places that prom pictures have to be taken.
That's true. All right, we'll come back to it next work session. CARES Act funding, Steve?
Yes, sir. As we continue to progress with evaluation of how the, the town can best utilize the, the CARES Act funding avail, made available to us, there are two options that we'd like to discuss with council. Part of what the CARES Act allows the, the town to do is to establish a grant program for COVID-related private business enhancements. What we've developed as a draft through your, your review tonight would be the, the town's version of the CARES Act grant program, where we would propose that businesses can request a grant of $2,500, nonprofit businesses could request $500, and home-based businesses could request $250 towards their qualifying capital expenses. There is no restriction on location, as long as you are located within the town and operate your business within the town, you could seek funding for, through this program. So again, working with, with Brian and the town attorney, we've developed basically the schematic of it, we wanted to present that to council. The other item that Jason identified through the town of Bridgewater, and up until a week ago, I thought this was just, you know, why you hire an attorney to read the fine line and, and do things that really seem like they're skirting the intent of the, the act, but effectively, the act, the CARES Act established a date of March, as if you had your budget established in March 2020, you could not apply any CARES Act funding towards any COVID-related entity that had been funded in a budget adopted prior to March. Fast forward to July and we have a new fiscal year that was adopted after March. And as such, the town of Bridgewater has determined that they will be using some of the CARES Act funding made available to them to offset the cost of their police department. Following Jason bringing this to our attention, I contacted Dennis Click at Page County and he researched it, and while it may not be the true intent of the CARES Act legally, the, the town has the ability to use CARES Act funding to offset our, some of our expenses, salaries and whatnot for our police department. So what that would mean to us is that we believe that the $150,000 that we had originally thought would go towards a, a new restroom, we don't think that that will necessarily qualify under the, all of the CARES Act requirements. What that may mean is that we can then use $150,000 of our, our CARES Act money to offset the budgeted salaries of our officers, since they are our first responders responding to COVID-related incidents. Effectively, what that translates to is that we might have, if, if all of this work went forward, our expenses in FY 2021 for our police department could be reduced by $150,000 and then that would have freed it up, freed up $150,000 in our general fund to either add to fund balance or to go towards some item that council deems appropriate.
It would also help to fill the gap of lost revenue with that second person in the general fund.
Which is directly related to COVID, anyways.
So two ways, two ways to look at it, we don't spend it, we save money, and we get free money, we save money, so.
We, we can't say that we're using it to replace money.
Right, sure.
That, that is specific in there, but we can say that we're offsetting the cost for, but you're, you're correct.
Correct.
Have you heard about a county?
Mr. Click said that because Bridgewater is doing it and he looked at a couple other localities, and again, the letter of the law says that if your, your budget established prior to March 2020, you could not seek, you couldn't offset it. But again, with our fiscal year starting in July 1, by the letter of the law, we are not, that, that budget was not established by, before March, and so we aren't offsetting a budget that was established prior to March 2020.
I was gonna do a big ticket, I, I think I would run it by the county administrator, make sure that they blessed that.
They have, that's why I'm saying, Mr. Click is the, the finance director and he has run it up with, with Ms. Moller, and there are other communities that are pursuing this, so, yes, sir, it, it seems like, again, while it's not the intent of the legislation, it follows the letter of the law, and there is a, a net benefit to the town.
Steve, I got a different question about the money that we use as grants for small businesses. I know there's a certain amount of money, but so is it first come, first served, or is it...
It, it could be, and again, the $25,000 that we've allocated, if for any reason we, you know, council can adjust how much we, we put towards that, if there is an outpouring of, of requests.
You can't see why people wouldn't apply for it.
Well, again, it, it can't just be for anything, anything that you want because you have a business, if there, there, we have to establish the eligibility criteria and what it can be used for. It, you know, if, it can be used to offset rent or a mortgage cost because you were affected by COVID. were affected by COVID. It can be used to offset the cost of PPE for your employees and and things of that nature. But similar to us, just because I lost money, I I can't ask the town to to give, to to reimburse that. There has to be some qualifying capital investment made with the money.
Steve, in term of, in terms of determination, how are you differentiating a small business versus a home-based business? Do you just mean somebody who's operating a business out of their home and they don't have a separate location which they're not living in? Is that what's gonna be the threshold there?
Well, our business licenses for home-based actually identify that, you know, rather than, so, yes, if if you're operating out of your home, then we would see you as a a home-based business. That said, you can't be a home-based business and reselling for a national chain, you know, if I I guess the the, unfortunately, and and that is a requirement from the Fed, so I don't think if you are an Avon representative or a Tupperware representative or something along those lines, those unfortunately don't qualify. If you are affiliated with a national firm, it it, the the CARES Act does not allow grant funding to go to you. If you are, honestly, if you're operating a a mowing business out of your home and you need money to purchase masks, not that they're necessarily related to COVID, but masks are a qualifying item and you could seek a grant reimbursement for that.
So just to confirm, everybody has to have had a business license active and current before January first, twenty nineteen, to be eligible for this?
Yes, ma'am.
And they they have to be current, of course, in their current business license. And then the difference between whether they would qualify for the small business versus the home-based business is simply the physical address of their business.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it which license they purchase?
Well, effectively, it it, we would have to say that if you're operating out of your home, you're a home-based business.
Steve, did we get an over me already in the next meeting and what we, I mean, did we get the whole amount? I think you mentioned once, one time, the county was thinking about maybe trying to take something back that we were gonna get, did that ever happen? Did we get the four hundred and twenty and the third one? What was that figure?
Yeah, four hundred and twenty, I think, was the full number. I think the county is pulling, has confirmed that they will be pulling a portion from all the three towns to account for the EMS costs that they've incurred under the auspices that, you know, it was EMS services provided in each of the towns.
Do we know that amount or they still?
Uh, I don't think we've gotten the the fixed amount yet, but we can, we can definitely see if there is an updated cost on that.
I'm glad to see the small business grant, I guess, things really good. I don't know, we haven't explicitly said anything about first come, first served. I would make it, I would encourage us to make it explicit that it's not.
And and you're correct.
Yeah, we just have to take them, we're putting a pot.
Yeah, we would, we would set a date for application and then we can work with with council to, for the award of 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 funds.
That's what I'd like to know. Well, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say the twenty-five hundred, it may be that if we have huge demand, they'll be reducing to fifteen hundred, two thousand, something like that for some of those businesses or increase the cap, you know, depending on how we're using the funds.
That's why, that's why I would like to know how to, how we're using the funds, what we, we think we're gonna get, what we spent so far. Do we get a police car?
We've ordered one, yes, sir.
We're waiting for the twenty, oh, no, we're right here.
Yeah, it 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 has been, yeah, it has been ordered. The the other thing, we had with the FY twenty-one money, we had, we were, we were purchasing a a vehicle, but what we've confirmed with with Page County is that the upfitting, the interior upfitting, the the cage on the inside also qualifies. So that helped us pull about seven thousand dollars out of the the cost that we would have had to bear to outfit that vehicle. So we are, as we go forward, anytime we have items that we think qualify, we are contacting Page County and and working with them to to see things happen. As you came in, hopefully you noticed the really fancy stanchions in the the entry area. We were able to replace our old cones and and caution tape. So again, that is a qualifying item because it helps to direct people safely through and open it, open space in town hall, so.
Do you have a rough idea how much we spent so far?
Uh, probably, well, actually, what we've spent, probably fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. And that's, that that includes salaries that we incurred for folks that were on either out for COVID-related issues. We've purchased enough, a lot of PPE. We've purchased some of the, I think we've purchased but not received, a lot of the additional sanitizing stations. So we haven't spent a lot, but we have allocated at the 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 new police vehicle, upfitting of the other vehicle that we we purchased with our money.
I can't remember, was there one of those mobile signs on the list originally?
Yes, sir, we're looking to purchase two additional mobile signs. We're, we're also investigating purchasing four permanent video signs.
And so those are around ten thousand a pop, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The the mobile ones, I believe, are nineteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. The mobile ones were seventeen?
Yeah.
So we're talking allocating about seventy-five K?
Yes, sir.
That's nice to get that.
It's nice, that's a lot of money to make sure, yeah.
Under the small, under the small business grant, um, one of the things that maybe we should consider expanding it to, this and this list, but it's often in a lot of the other care grant funds, is on utilities. So this includes personal protective equipment, cleaning and sanitizing expenses, facility improvements, rent, business mortgage, should we also include utilities?
That's up to council.
I I missed it, what's the payback period or what?
There is none, it is a grant, basically.
No, no, I mean, what, what, how many months do they have to offset those or to show?
Basically, to qualify, it has to be an expense between March and December of this year.
So e- either way, we have, it's fine, but even if it wasn't, you know, March to December, it'll be nine months, ten months.
I mean, most of the other care grants, things that I'm reading, include utilities. So I was wondering if we should also be inclusive of that since the other ones are.
If if council desires, we can add that to the qualifying expenses.
That's all you got, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
That you might have to come.